Called the March twenty fourth, special meeting of the Board of Finance. Let us recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, what agenda item, the first agenda item, we're going to table until the next meeting, or whatever is the appropriate thing to do to it, it's not gonna happen because I need some more information. We do that. So, we will go to the second item, which is consideration of public hearing. What I wanna do is go around with each person, just what your reflections are and what transpired. And in no particular order, whoever wants to share, and then we're going to go through, not every single account. But if there are any accounts that one wants to make a motion to modify in any way, we will do that. So, if we could go around and just, what did you get from the public hearing? You learn.
I'd love Bob to start. You know, I thought the public hearing, I don't think anybody on this board would be satisfied until we get the whole town to come to the public hearing. But though, I was able to do a little bit of counting who's in the audience despite the, you know, the bright lights that were, I looked to be about a hundred and hundred and two people, which according to my notes is about what we had last year. We had twenty-four speakers at the public hearing, and we had forty-eight written submissions. When I break them down, it comes out to a total of forty-seven favorable, kinda budget as is, a lot of comment about the order that, twenty against, and then there were five folks who I put down as saying something. I'd like to come back to that just in a moment, but that's kinda my breakout. So, to me, that suggests the budget that we put together, very much like the budget we put together last year, likely will pass, is likely will be acceptable to the vast majority of the town, maybe like fifty-five, sixty percent. So, I would think that we should just put it to town, annual meeting, annual town meeting, as is. Coming back to the two, there were these five folks who said other, two of the five, and I bring this up because the two folks who made this comment are, in my, they're giants of Bethel, they're well-known. And they, I think, accused this board of rubber stamping, not doing our work. I was really disappointed by that, especially given those two folks, again, giants of Bethel, know what we go through. Know that we did all the workshops for the board of that, went through all the lines, line by line, did twenty-plus hours of departmental presentations. I just think people have to know that we did not rubber stamp anything. And I just wanted to get that out there. I want the town to have confidence that we did what we were supposed to do. That's my thing from the public here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I would echo what Bob said. I think most, I think the majority of people who spoke, and the majority of the letters we received suggested that people are okay with this budget. I think part of that is the actual tax implications are relatively low for most people, and so I would say go to referendos.
Um, I have a little different look at it. You know, the people that I talk to, on another side of the tracks, I guess, whatever, however you wanna say it, they don't wanna get up in a meeting and be called names on social media. So, the people that I represent will never show up to those meetings. They do contact us in ways, and I appreciate them doing it, but they would never stand up. And there's parents, there's young people, and there's old people in this town. And I was surprised that sixteen percent of this, the town of Bethel, have kids in this school. So, this budget has to be for everybody. I talked to one guy, he, nine hundred dollar electric bill. He has electric heat. He said, how am I gonna pay this? A let, nine hundred dollar electric bill. That was my mortgage growing up. I can't imagine how these young kids even try to make it in this town. Everybody matters to me. I love the schools, I support the schools, my kids are getting great educations, but there has to be some kind of, compromise. So, by the town meeting, I thought there was new speakers. Deion, I thought your speech was excellent, it was spot-on. We, all these unfunded mandates, they're not our problems, but it seems like we have to just clean it all up. And that's not fair for, to the guy that's paying the nine hundred dollar electric bill, or the four dollars and twenty-five cent gas bill. So, again, I thought everybody was respectful at the meeting, but the people that I talk to do not wanna be called names on social media. And that's a shame, because free speech is free speech.
So, I'm gonna go in the middle of these two. I think that there was, you know, supported the budget, or supported the meeting, support through the notes. One of the things that Nick's actually here, Nick brought up, you know, a point about possibly raising, you know, some of the building fees, or some of the help fees. You know, do we turn around and take a look at that? I liked the, I really liked the fact that a lot of, there was starting to be some discussion through the effects of all of these unfunded mandates, not just from the school side. I recently, we have property in New York, I recently, in my last tax bill, got a letter, which, if I'd gone home, I would've brought it, that actually kind of explained to the taxpayers when they sent out the bills, just how little control, unfortunately, that they have at their counties, but at the county level, control that they have over their budgets. And I think one of the things that I especially took away from the meeting was, I was happy to hear a lot of people starting to discuss this, and the importance of going after that, we, there's so little control. I'm really hoping that we can start some more of those conversations to try to, you know, make our voices heard. So, I would be open to a discussion this evening. Unfortunately, I don't think we had that discussion the way that maybe we should have at the last meeting, for various reasons. But, you know, but I think if we're gonna look at it, we need to look at this as a whole. You know, not just pick up, not just pick on somebody, and to, you know, and Nick's statement of saying people coming after you on social media, but the tables are also turned. I think we, as the Board of Finance members, many of us have also been, myself included, been called out on social media as well, and I know there's other people on here as well. So, shame on all of you for turning the tables. Let's, how about you get up your eyes? It's getting hotter. Yeah.
I'm gonna take the excuse that I'm the new guy, and I wanna go back a little bit to the last time we deliberated here. I really felt that it was rushed, and I thought the process was, that got us in a little bit of trouble. I think I fought to get it broken up so we could really absorb what was going on. So, that was my first take of this new process to me, sitting on this side of the table. The other one was, Madam Chair, you asked what our opinions were of the public hearing. I felt, my perception was, it was fifty-fifty. I was very surprised that most of the speakers that were passionate were connected to the Board of Ed through being a teacher, or something really, really close. I thought a lot of the time that was spent on public hearings was talked about special programs that everybody was very interested in. It's important that the public knows that all we get to talk about is the bottom line, and we give a big pile of money to the Board of Ed, and it's the Board of Ed and administration to figure out how to spend that money. So, when somebody says, I can't believe you're taking a gymnasium floor out of the middle school, or you're gonna take this program out, we don't get to decide that. We get to decide a dollar amount, and then the experts get to spend the money the way they find appropriately. I don't read social media. I think that I'm a good person. I put my head on my pillow every single night. I felt like I was attacked personally. Just because I have an opinion, and you have a different opinion, and you're as passionate as I am, it doesn't mean you're more right than I am. It means that's what you believe, and that's what I believe. We take testimony every single night, and all we can do is try to make the best decision that we could do. It doesn't mean I'm a bad person because I have a hard time spending money versus somebody that could spend money easier, okay? I grew up in Bethel, I've lived here for fifty-five years. My father was a landscaper. He raised five children, and we were all educated. And you know what? We did the best we could within our means. And that's all I'm trying to bring to the table, is do the best that we could do and keep Bethel affordable. Everybody tells me my home value, my home value, my home value, and we need the best education. You're absolutely right. That is, for realtors, that is a huge thing for it, to have a good education for home values. But we gotta be able to afford to live in this town, to be able to get the education. So, I think if everybody could just tone it down a little bit with the attacks, I was attacked from the left before the budget process, and then when this board didn't do the right thing for all of Bethel, then I was attacked from the conservative side, saying I didn't do my job. And every single night, all I'm trying to do is my job. I love TV. I can watch it all night, but I come here and I get beat up. All I ask is everybody tone it down a little bit, and we all work together for the better of Bethel. Thank you.
As far as the public hearing went, I'd just like to thank everybody who came out and showed interest, you know. I really wish we did have more, that we could drive more people out to these hearings, so people would know what was going on. But at the end of the day, you know, everybody who took the time to be there felt it was important. And, you know, I felt pretty good about the whole process and listening to what people had to say. One of the things that really struck me, you know, if I took anything away from it, was there are a lot of people who really do know their stuff, and they rate it, they're passionate about it, I get it. So, I was glad to be there.
Okay, so, I had a lot of the same experiences as everyone here. The thing that comes into my mind, though, is that, in a way, it's not exactly the number of letters that we receive, because it's harder, for some reason, and I think part of it is, you know, the way the public get treated in public. They're hesitant to get up, they're hesitant to speak, and they're even hesitant to write and go on the record. I have had people call me, parents, and say, I just don't wanna go on the record, because I've had people tell me that they're shunned by other parents, or this and that happens. So, I agree with John a hundred percent. We have to tone it down. This is not personal. We love this town, every single one of us, and we are not trying to cut anyone off at the knees or take money from children. That's just not what we're about. We're trying to have something that's balanced, and so, that there, instead of two communities, there's one community. Because it's felt to me for a long time that it's really two communities, and it seems even to be getting more, you know, disparate. That's just, that's just my impressions and other people I've spoken to. A lot of things have happened since February twenty-second, which I agree, we got, we did get, we didn't, with what Bobby said, Bobby Joe said that, we didn't, it wasn't focused the same way. There were things that, you know, I changed, I'll take responsibility for, some miscommunications. So, and that was fine that it went to the public hearing like that. But I think that we really owe it to everybody to just, you know, we all individually looked at these accounts again, I know I have, and just talk about a couple of things. I was ecstatic to see people talk about the unfunded mandates. And I know, since Dr. Carter's been here, she has been diligent about, you know, you have a lobbyist too, you know, you have, is that not true? You have a lobbyist? Yeah, that who works on behalf, right? So, um, I, I'm not saying this for any other reason other than it's been on my mind for many years. In two thousand, when did you come here?
Two thousand fourteen.
Right, it was, I think, the year before. I actually gave a presentation to the Board of Ed about this. I think Larry was the chairperson. I gave the mailing list of legislators. I had sample letters. I said, maybe the PTO can take this on, you know, because I've been writing letters myself for many, many years. And I was so happy because it made me think that maybe that people will be galvanized and they'll be energized to push towards Hartford, because the devil's not sitting at this table. I mean, we're just, you know, the people that you can, that people can blame, but it's not really with us. I saw those unfunded mandates. They are, the length of that list is insane, and some of the mandates are insane. So, I think, you know, maybe people have to think of that more, because otherwise, it's just gonna get worse. It really is. It's just never gonna stop. And there are things that are happening in our economy now that literally happened since February twenty-second, that we have to be aware of, that people who are, you know, have less means are struggling with, and not just gas prices, but energy, utilities, everything, prices at the store. It's a little bit crazy, and it's a little bit scary. So, I think that if we could all give each other, you know, a wide berth and a little bit of, you know, I'd done take care of the screening, and then we'll be good. So, without further ado, unless you have something, let's just look at it this way. If there's any account that anybody's been thinking about, that they would like to make a motion to modify in any way, speak now.
I made a small list, and a very small list. I'll make a motion for two forty dash fifty-four oh three, the road paving account for fifty thousand dollars. Couple people spoke that they're okay with driving over bumpy roads. I don't like to got it.
Do I have a second?
Is that a fifty thousand dollar reduction?
Okay.
It's a fifty-four oh four.
Okay.
Thank you, Brad.
Seconded for discussion.
And again, you know, if we have to choose, we have to choose. And if fifty thousand has to come off the road account to save something else, then I'll drive over a bumpy road. I would love to have a brand-new police car, brand-new this, brand-new that, but again, there's not many accounts, especially on the town side, so.
Well, with the road construction, to be fair, we did have a grant that covered, would you like to explain that grant, would you?
Sure. So, the town gets lots of money every year to the tune of like a hundred and thirty thousand dollars round effort. The town hasn't used it since we tore down the old town hall. So, in that account was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that the town needed to use for some kind of project. So, the selectmen decided to use that money, pull seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the LoSIP account from the state, and use it to roads. To get it on the budget, there was a town meeting that increased the road construction budget by seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and increased revenue by seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to equal it up. That was done the same time that the hundred thousand was returned to the parking rack. So, even though the nine hundred thousand looks like a reduction of two seventy-five, it's from the last budget that was voted on by the town, it's a four hundred thousand dollar increase.
So, this would essentially bring it to eight fifty, if we reduce fifty thousand.
Didn't the Board of Selectmen take fifty out when they deliberated on it?
The Board of Selectmen took out seventy-five.
Okay.
And we've been told for years that the number is between nine fifty and a million, what this town should be doing.
So, with this fifty thousand, how much are we gonna spend? Would we spend this year? Eight fifty?
We'd spend eight fifty. So, that means roughly a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of roadwork is not gonna get done in twenty-three and get pushed off to twenty-four.
But there was here, oh, sorry, one twenty-five.
Yeah.
And what were we the year before?
I think it's been five hundred thousand. The Board of Finance had increased it over time, and then it got cut. So, if you give me one second.
Before we had this, before you had the seven fifty increase, sorry. Before we had the seven fifty increase.
It was at five hundred thousand.
So, we got an update.
Yeah.
And as I understand, the goal, the goal is nine or better.
So.
Yeah.
The Board of Finance, over the last number of years, twenty twenty it was seven hundred thousand, twenty nineteen it was seven hundred thousand. So, twenty twenty-one, I think we reduced it because of the uncertainty with COVID, to five hundred thousand twenty-two, or kept it at five hundred thousand. But it was known at the time that Matt had the idea of using lots of money. So, I don't think that's why it was increased last year, and still some of the uncertainty.
So, how much, how much roadwork got done last year? What was the total amount of dollars that got put towards roadwork?
So, in fiscal year twenty-one, we did four eighty-eight, so five hundred thousand. This year, so far, we've used seven sixty and the twelve five. But the other part will be done, because the paving's two seasons.
Right, right.
Yeah, the summer and then the spring season of paving.
So, how many dollars have actually been put towards, will be put towards paving in this fiscal year?
One million two hundred and fifty thousand. He will spend it all, yes. Yeah.
And we're talking about going back, going back down to? Any more discussion? All right.
To me, this is an account where we're not talking about the funeral. We know that roads won't get done. When the Board of Selectmen reduced the amount from nine seventy to nine hundred, Willow and Lindbergh dropped off the list. So, this isn't, we know that there will be some road that drops off the list. To me, if we make this, I prefer not to make this cut, because I think we will, we'll start building tomorrow's problem today. Bobby Dibble has told us, we really need to be at the nine to zero category. And so, this is going to be another year on top of fiscal year twenty-one, right, which was the height of the uncertainty of COVID. That's when we did just five hundred thousand. But it's going to be another year we become deficient, what Dibble has told us.
But here's my question, it's a question to you, Brad, that every year Bob Dibble, he says this, I adore him, but he says his invoices always come in late, so we don't really ever know exactly how much.
Yeah, but so, even though the invoice is coming late, if we give him a million dollars, he spends a million dollars, just because he hasn't paid the invoice.
No, it's not about paying, it's just that when I've asked him for totals.
Yeah, so, he, he always spent it, you know, and like last year you got within twelve thousand, because you can't really exceed it. So, you know, he gets as close as he can to it with it.
And Bob, I do agree with you, we should be spending nine fifty to a million, and last year we spent five hundred. I don't have a problem in two years getting back to the nine, nine fifty, you know what I mean? Doing it all in one year, especially with all the, you know, the increase of spending, you know, there's two new police, blah, 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 you know, a lot in the Board of Ed, you know, let's, I'm sorry, you know, there's gonna be a couple of roads off, but let's get back to it, you know. It's like walking stairs, you know, let's get to the top stairs, maybe next year.
So, last year, if I understand, Brad, we spent one million two hundred and fifty thousand. During Mr. Dibble's testimony, he said, we really need to spend nine to nine fifty. So, even though we're gonna go to eight fifty, Bob, last year we exceeded what he really wanted to. So, maybe we got one of those really bad roads done. So, this year would be the great year to lose a little bit off that budget. And then when you bump it up next year, we're still ahead, because we wanna do nine every year. We did twelve fifty last year, and we're gonna do eight fifty this year. So, if you even average out, we still did the nine hundred, nine fifty a year.
But to Brad's point, the million two fifty from last year, fill the hole that we built the year before.
Which we're getting out of, right, right.
We're still a little bit below what Dibble tells us.
But Brad, so we're in a different role in a way, because there's some other sources. For example, the general fund, which, you know, we're allocating to different things. This is just a question of trying to get fifty thousand out of the budget. Would it, it wouldn't be crazy to, to fill in a gap with, from another account?
Yeah, you could use CNR to get it there. I think, not to speak for Mr. Manfreda, because he does a good job too himself, but I think the goal was to get the budget, the operating budget, where we need it to be every year, so we're not having to like take a little piece from here and just do it right.
And that's, that's true, but I think we're in different times, right? Well, we're in times that we've never experienced, so. I'm just talking, you know, I'm just saying that's an idea. Okay, so, the motion to reduce Department two forty, line five four oh four, for fifty thousand dollars.
If he made a motion to move the question.
She moved it anyway, I'll roll her. Sorry, you don't care about those things. I'll kick her next time.
Please, don't. All in favor?
Aye. Did that pass?
Yes.
I'd like to make the next motion for the police, under the police account number three sixty. Before I made this motion, during the public hearing, somebody said, wouldn't it be terrible if I called the police at night? And they said they can't come because we don't have enough overtime. I found that offensive. Anytime, any department that we cut money from, if they run out of money during the year, we would have a special meeting, and we'd make sure we plugged the hole and funded it. So, with that, account number three sixty, the police overtime account, I'd like to cut it by twenty-five thousand dollars and see how that works out throughout the year.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay, discuss, discussion.
I was on the police commission for seven or eight years, and this account has grown a bunch over the years. Saying that, you know, there's always officers either out on workman's comp or on military leave. But all that extra pay that doesn't get to the W-two, the salary, all gets put in to oversee and fix the overtime account. And as I used to track it, because I'm tight, it used to always pretty much balance out. Brad, if you can back me up there, there's always money that seems to come from different accounts that pay for that. It doesn't, we're not short at the end of the year.
It depends on the year. Like, I ran the last three years. So, twenty nineteen, the salary line as a whole came in under by sixty-one thousand. Twenty twenty, it was over by sixty-one thousand. Twenty twenty-one, it was over one forty-three, but some of that offset was in the wage adjustment account, because it was a new contract.
So, where did you make up those differences?
Well, in the hundred and forty-three to over in twenty-one, there was the wage adjustment account, because of salary adjustment. Usually, it's in wage adjustment, and hopefully, you know, but overtime is what it is. So, to John's point, I think you have to understand that he may come back to you, you know, if he doesn't have some kind of offset because he has less salary employees, and his overtime's up. You know, he can't control it to a certain degree.
But here's the thought there, is that, and I said this to you about any cuts, that there are avenues to come back. This is something, you know, because we say, once it's in the budget, it's in there forever. Once it's in the operating budget, it's not coming out. So, if there are small cuts to be made, people can come to the Board of Finance and ask for one. That is the truth.
Yeah, it does get a little tricky, because there's a lot of extra stuff. You need a town meeting, you need the force, but, you know.
Right, but I'm saying, if it was something, I mean, we're not, we haven't talked anything massive.
Yeah, yeah. It's not as easy as like when you took out the police car. The Board of Finance gets to fully decide the CNR.
I understand.
So, there are extra steps.
But doing it this way, I'm sorry about that, but doing it this way, we hope that the overtime doesn't exceed the number that, that department, and then we approve, okay? But if it does, they come back.
And it tends to balance off with people being out or sick or.
And doing it, and doing it this way, to finish my thought, doing it this way, is we're not overtaxing the taxpayer halfway through the year. If it's working out with the overtime, if it doesn't work out, then, then our bad, and we have to plug the hole. But if it does work out, then we didn't overtax the taxpayer in the beginning of it.
How close have they come in the past to reaching my number?
He told me yesterday, because it gets a little convoluted with mine, that he spent two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in overtime, which is exactly not tech counting training, is what he's asking for.
And he spent two eighty last year.
Yeah.
And he's asking for two.
I'm pretty sure the number is two.
He added six this year.
Yeah, so, yeah. That's correct. He is asking two eighty-six.
Number, a smaller reduction.
What does it cost to do a town meeting? That's just a dumb question. I'm not really sure.
Thousand bucks. It's the advertising cost, it's the main cost.
Yeah, I don't think it should be used appreciatively, but just, you know, if some.
No, 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 I want, I mean, because if you were gonna tell me it was ten grand.
Now, a referendum is like ten to fifteen, depending on height. But, yeah, a town meeting relatively cheap, depending on the new stuff.
Thousand dollars would be a lot for that type of announcement.
Now, didn't some, I'm sorry, didn't some, by hiring a police officer and a half, is gonna reduce? It's not dollar for dollar, it's, it's. A little? It's weird, it's dispatch, it's, it's, there's a lot involved. If you think you're gonna put an officer, get sixty hours a week, it's gonna cut overtime sixty hours.
Yeah, and you're not gonna get the new hire for six months, then the academy, then they have a training officer, you know. And you gotta remember, some of it is dispatch overtime, and because of the way it's set up, anytime. And because of the way it's set up, anytime a dispatcher's out sick or on vacation, it creates, yeah.
Higher paid officer takes that, you know, it's, it's a union thing.
So he asked for two eighty?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to amend the motion.
I, I, I think we should try the motion.
Yeah.
If there's another motion someone wants to make, then I think that's fine.
Well, consider it's my motion, I, but I agree with that. I would like my.
Well, actually, I, I, I've got to put a motion on the floor to amend the motion. And you can shoot me down if you want, I, I make a motion, we met it for fifteen thousand.
Okay, so we just vote on that? All in favor?
We have to vote on the amendment motion.
All in favor of me? Let's vote on, we're gonna vote on the amended motion, which is twenty five to?
Maybe fifteen.
Fifteen.
Senator, who second? I do.
Yes, sir.
I just wanna go on record, I guess, that I'm uncomfortable cutting overtime because we know it will be incurred. It's a little bit disingenuous to say this is a savings because the time is going to be incurred. And I also, I just, in the times that we're in, and I'm not going to utter the phrase, but in the times that we're in, I think this is a bad time to take money away. Officers. But that said.
And, and if I can add something, the officers that get the overtime are gonna be paid the overtime. They're not gonna say, you know what, that board of finance, don't show up on phone rope, they're gonna get the overtime.
Well, that's my point, like, exactly right, it's gonna, the time is going to be incurred. We, Chief Wagner said his best guess is two eighty.
Two eighty six is what he asked.
Two eighty six.
And not to, not to throw Chief Wagner up, under the bus, I had a long conversation with him and he gave me three accounts to take money out. If he was gonna get his officers. So he, he, he knows also he needs a compromise in, in this kind of.
So you're saying he might be, he might be surprised by this, is what you're saying?
He gave me the count numbers.
Well, I mean, it's also, they, they are picking up an officer a half this year.
That's a lot in one year.
I, and so I think fifteen is, is reasonable to take a stab at it and, you know, and we're, and we're doing something for the taxpayer, we're doing, but we're still maintaining what we need for our police force. I don't feel like we're taking anything away per se, because we did add a police officer and we say half, meaning a police officer starting half of the year. So that's why we have half a police officer.
Okay, should we vote on the amended motion? All in favor of the amended motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
I oppose it.
Oh wait, sorry.
Yeah, so nay, my twenty five's back in the play.
No, I'm voting on the whole thing, I'm sorry.
Me and you look in the same place. Yeah, so now we're back to twelve thousand.
No, we're back to my motion.
Hold on, we've gotta clean this up. Who, who voted yes for the fifteen?
For the amendment?
Free.
Okay, thank you.
So now we do that.
Twenty five, yep.
Yes, okay. Now we'll vote on the motion itself. All in favor of the original motion to reduce Department two forty, line five zero, five four zero four by fifty thousand? Oh no, I'm sorry, sorry, please forgive me, forgive me.
You really tried to rather.
Yeah, grand, okay. Um, Department three sixty five one oh one, police overtime by twenty five thousand, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
Dale.
Three.
Four.
Four.
Okay.
So there were four nays.
Yes.
So it doesn't pass.
Correct.
So we able to entertain a motion? So I'd like to make a motion that we reduce the, the account, uh, what was number, get this.
Six, five, one oh one.
Three, six, five, one oh one by fifteen thousand dollars. I'll add that motion again.
It is your motion, right?
Yeah, so somebody has a second that.
Okay, I'm sorry, who, who second?
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, everyone in favor of reducing that only by fifteen thousand, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
Okay.
All right, so, so.
I'll make a motion three sixty dash fifty four oh three for a thousand dollars, it's COVID supplies. Chief Wagner's got the supplies and other, uh, other avenues and there's a thousand dollars he had in there. That's my motion.
Second.
I'm sorry, what, what's the account?
Uh, three sixty fifty four oh three, I believe it's a bunch of equipment in there and stuff.
And you're saying that Chief Wagner says he has one year, he's got the goods already?
He, he has other avenues to get what he needs, he said the demand is way down and then there's other avenues to get what he needs.
Was it from one thousand?
One thousand.
Somebody second it?
I did.
Okay, anybody? I mean, I'm, I'm okay with it. So we got on it? All in favor of reducing by one thousand, the Department three sixty five four oh three to sixty five by saying aye? Aye, opposed?
But that's all. Another one here, again, I'm not beating up on a police, it's a five million dollar budget, it's the second biggest budget in the town. We're talking about very dollar, small dollar amounts, three sixty dash fifty four oh three for seventy two hundred. It's a light bar that he puts in there every year. This year, he thinks he's not gonna have to replace one of the older ones because he keeps getting new ones, all the new fit up on the new cars. Um, so my motion is seventy two hundred out of, uh, three sixty fifty four oh three.
I'll second that, please.
But we just took a thousand out of that same account.
Just, yeah, and he, you're right, I should have added up the two, but I wanted to explain what both of them.
And I seconded that, sorry.
Okay, so the light bars, is that just something they keep in the closet, waiting to get a card and put it on top?
It's just money in there, so if they need it, you know, I used to, Chief Finch all the time, he'd give me the budget. After a couple of years, I started getting a little smarter as a chief, I said, that rubber mat in the front door, you haven't changed it in three years, but it's always in the budget, but.
Senator, my, my understanding is, is Brad, maybe go back to the other one, so that already came out with the board of selection.
No, the money was in the, the, for the car, a new one, this is a separate light bar.
And there's fittings for that car, this is something that's literally extra, um, an extra kit. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I know, the, the chief had a prior commitment, so he was able, he was not able to hear today, I, I would ask, you're, you're representing that he told you this could come out.
I was in Berkshire parking lot for an hour, a conversation with him two, two weeks ago about these, and that's, we came up with these numbers.
Yeah, thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed.
Nay.
Okay, so, two nays, Bobby Joe and Dan.
Next. I get, I get, I'll provide my email account, I mean, my email address later for everybody, but account number four sixty, the board of head, uh, maintenance account. I'd like to reduce that by twenty two thousand, six ninety four, we reduced it by twenty five thousand the last meeting. That would bring it a total of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars toward maintenance and reasoning is we just did three big renovations to three of the schools and hopefully the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars would, uh, continue the maintenance of the buildings, um, for the next coming year. Um, and of course, if they ran out of money and they needed something, is that my motion? Yes, it is my motion. When I get a second, the motion's over, but I would, I would support them coming back if they needed anything.
Right, and all this.
Right, you gotta get that motion.
She's not writing that down.
So you seconded it?
I'll second.
Yeah, okay.
And this is another account bound, and I know it's, it, it should be higher, but it was three fifty last year. Let's maybe next year get it backed up to where it should be. Again, all these big jumps, i- it is, is increases to the taxpayers, so I'd be willing to get it back up to where it should be next year, but it's another stairs.
Yeah, definitely.
And just to pick up, I don't call on people.
Not raising our hands?
No.
But I, I hear what you're saying, Nick, though, I think as a factual matter, that's, that's not how they spent money, right? We asked them to take money out of the one, two percent fund, so they did the full load of, of improvements. I'll go back to the public hearing. But, you know, I'm a big stats person, so we ended up with seventy two people expressing their interest. Forty seven were in favor, twenty were against. At five, we said something else, to me, that suggests the majority of Bethel are okay with the way this budget's put together. And I think we need to protect our physical assets, including these border bed assets, so I, I would just really try to encourage us to not cut this.
I know you're a statistics guy, I just wanna say two words, turf field. And I'm only saying that because a lot of people showed up with T-shirts for the turf field, spoke very passionately about the turf field.
True, but this is a public hearing.
It certainly is, but that was a public hearing, that was a public hearing.
We had the same number of folks at this public hearing as we had in previous years. Those budgets that went forward passed, I just think that what we heard, right, if we are, if we are here, I, I'd like this discussion of doing what is right for all of Beth.
Absolutely.
Not doing what we think is right because it's our preference, right? But I think we should protect our physical assets especially, and that's why I'm against this, this. We, we did not spend three fifty last year, we spent the full amount, just asked them to take it out.
Right, and just to point out, there's been a lot of funds that, um, have come, that are coming, that's kind of a fluid situation. This is not a huge.
It's not a lot of money.
And, and there, I mean, there's still funds that are coming from the government.
But let's talk about an example of what would be cut, and you guys correctly, if I'm wrong, my son is in the middle school. They are not allowed to have their phones on them, which I think is a good policy, by the way. Their lockers also don't lock and don't work, so when children leave their phones in their lockers, which is what they're supposed to do, they can be stolen, taken, manipulated, whatever. So are we not gonna be able to fix those lockers if we take another twenty two thousand dollars out? And isn't that a significant impact to our children?
I mean, every year we do make choices. We have a really good plan going in and then things happen.
Of course.
It's sort of like when you boil those. So, um, I can't speak specifically that the lockers are, are going to, or not going to be fixed. But those are the types of things that we defer, you know, we have to defer.
So it becomes less likely as we take more money out of that account.
Terry, if, if there was a choice between lockers and kids' personal property and something else, wouldn't that be high on the, on the list?
Everything was discussed at the moment, of course, safety always comes before anything else. And we go from there.
Okay, so.
And isn't it fair to say, though, that the COVID monies that you're receiving are, are not able to cover the kinds of things that are in this account?
No, not that kind of things, but there are things that it can.
That would give you leeway to then take money out of this account?
Probably not, to be fair, probably not, um, because the COVID money had to be spent for certain purposes, we talked about this to death. And so we can't defer, um, monies that we would have used in the four sixty to make repairs, like to the gym floor, to the lockers. I mean, you have a list of what we want to do. Um, and to Terry's point, in the past couple of years, we haven't been even able to even do what's on that list because we've had other mechanical issues happening, particularly after high school with the ADR system. So, um, it, it's deferred in this.
And, and let's be clear, I, I just have one example from middle school, I'm sure every single school has multiple other examples of things like that. So let's be clear about what we're cutting and that there isn't gonna be somewhere, some funds from somewhere else to take care of those things.
Because this can't come, because capital non-recurring can't cover anything from the four sixty part.
That's not true.
Depends.
It depends, I mean.
Have you seen the list of? They are, I, we're way underfunded on that, yeah.
It can, there are requests there, there.
And in twenty one, they spent four eighty five, right?
Excuse me?
I think they spent four eighty four, nine fifty three, right?
Yeah, so, to answer some of that, though, they spent four thirty nine, six eighty nine on the maintenance. The other forty five thousand was approved to come from fund balance for a specific project, which I think was a middle school chiller. Because it was two pieces of it, the forty five wasn't the whole piece of it, but that's part of it.
That is the other piece of the puzzle that we have, that we haven't had, and that is a surplus in the general fund. Am I right or wrong, that we, that's, you've been kind of navigating that to be spent to a certain, so that we have a certain percentage for the rating agencies?
Yes.
We've not had this before, so I guess what's hard for me is that, and I understand the need for all these repairs in the schools, but when it gets emotional, like when there's an emotional thing attached to it, it, it's really, it's, it's more fluid than that. It's not as black and white as that, it's like the kids' phones are all gonna get stolen because they can't fix the lockers. I mean, there's ways to do it, there's other ways.
Those are, those are not emotional things, those are real things that are.
I understand that, but they're real things in life that are real, that you can take care of them in other ways. So I don't, because we have this fund balance now that is larger than normal, it's more likely that something could be easily taken out of that while we have it and while we're directing the funds to different projects, it's, it's fluid, so, so let's think.
Let's talk about that.
Am I?
Yeah, so can I just make one suggestion that if, if this board does vote to reduce this? I think it's fair to then suggest to the board of ed to possibly go to the board of selectmen and ask for a capital non-recurring request for some of these items.
Fair enough.
And that could be dealt with before the summer, so it could get done over the summer, so they can get it done before, while kids are.
I would support that, we're not raising taxes, we're using money that's been taxed already.
I, I would support that, I would encourage to make it a fif, a request of fifty thousand because we took twenty, we took twenty five dollars last year.
Not gonna get along.
Oh, kids, I can't believe they shared a womb. Okay, so are you saying you would support taking fifty thousand out of capital not occurring to give to the schools to do their projects? Is that what?
We're not having that.
I think he really confused any.
What's happening here?
Just asking for clarity.
Can we vote on my motion?
I think Bob had.
One more question, sorry. What is the amount of projects that are already in line to be paid for by capital?
It's huge. The capital plan has. Uh, the initial request is ten million, seven hundred thousand.
Right, go ahead with.
We don't have enough, yeah, we just don't have enough.
How much is in there, Brad? How much is in capital?
A million.
What, seven and fifty?
Let's see, I will give you.
It's a million eight or something like that. We've been, we've been buying a lot, sure.
Well, but we didn't do much at all.
We did four hundred just on the AC for the high school.
So unallocated before the twenty three budget comes in, there's one million, two hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars and some change.
Should be used to pay ten point something of requests.
Well, plus, what's in, assuming this budget passes, is the CNR, that'd be another six fifty, so you're at one point eight.
Oh, right, because we funded, yeah, it was six fifty, and that six fifty is in the budget and it's higher than it was last year.
No.
No, it's the same.
It was always six fifty.
Well, not always.
It's been built up, but it was six fifty in twenty twenty two, and twenty twenty three, right now it's in there at six fifty.
So that's, we have just new clarification, so we're recommending that they go and ask for capital not recurring, which we don't have enough to fund currently.
They don't have to ask for cap not non-recurring, they just have to ask for the amount and then it's decided, it's free to take, you know, the capital recurring or.
But on top of eleven billion dollars that we're.
That, that's a wish list for next ten years, fire trucks and everything, that's why Brad was just.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, it is, the ten point seven is, was a legit.
Enrolling funding in us at six fifty a year.
It's a wish list, it's, you know, everybody can.
If we were to take twenty two thousand dollars, right, what, what is the impact to the taxpayer of us taking twenty two thousand dollars from the four sixty account? So how much less do they pay?
I'll tell you in one minute.
While he's figuring that, can I make, my problem is, is, it's like we're retaxing, we already taxed them too much and we couldn't give it back, so we put it in the non-recurring account, right?
That's not true. It's the general fund that this.
A general fund, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right, you're right, general fund, okay? And then we're taxing them again, that's, that's my problem. If we could use funds that are. If we could use funds that are already being created or.
But it's not as simple as that, John.
He doesn't listen, so just keep going.
You tell him that. Cause he can yell at you. I don't wanna be yelling at me.
Let's all try to get along.
So. Every twenty thousand dollars represents like point oh one bells on average.
Point oh one mils. So that would be like one penny per, per thousand dollars. Is that correct?
It's a cumulative thing. You can't really take something in isolation like that. It just can't.
I agree with you, but I just think we should understand like what we're reducing here, what we're arguing about, what we're reducing, right?
Right, so.
To make a meaningful impact to the taxpayer right now, we would have to take a million dollars out of this budget.
Oh, no kidding?
Yeah.
Are you making a motion?
I think a one point one percent increase is pretty darn good with seven percent inflation.
But it's over three percent spending because.
Look at the towns around us.
So you know what's so interesting to the new guy? We're spending more time deliberating less than a hundred than we did approving a fifty-two million dollar for the Board of Ed last time we all met at this table.
Yeah, we're working on really, really small cases.
I, I would say that's because, at least on this end, I think, we heard at the public hearing. Based on the number of years of experience and what kind of we hear, then what happens, that that budget, that the initial proposal that went to the public hearing. Would pass that reference with a fairly significant margin. So we, I think, spent the right time. And again, I know people accused us of rubber stamping. I didn't. We put a ton of time, right, in advance of the initial deliberation. And so we spent a lot of time going through the numbers. It's just that when we got to the final budget, we were comfortable with where it is. Now, we're expanding the discussion, cause these are the hard things where I think we have real disagreement about where our priorities are. So I, I don't find it unusual that now, when we're talking about these numbers, that we're having a longer discussion. That it's a small number, it kinda cuts both ways.
Right.
Right? It's a small number, so cut it. No, it doesn't hurt anybody. It's a small number, don't cut it. It doesn't hurt anybody. But I think we're trying to be more thoughtful about it. So it doesn't surprise me that we're having, I like this.
A spirited debate.
I just noticed, I think, somewhat different priorities that we would wanna expand in the budget.
It is a conversation.
No blood is been shed, no animals have been harmed. All right, are we gonna vote? All in favor of reducing Department four sixty. Line five, five oh nine by twenty-two thousand, six hundred ninety-four dollars, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? So it's four yes. So Dan, John, Nick. And Cynthia were yes.
So could I ask Matt Chairman that before we continue with our discussion?
Chairman, it sounds like charwoman.
Could I ask that we talk about what we can spend general fund money on before we continue this discussion?
Anything that enhances the, and improves the town.
I don't think that's entirely true if we wanna keep our triple A.
Ask Brad.
So the fund balance is an asset. Generally, the rating agencies are okay with you trading one asset for another. So if you're gonna take two hundred thousand dollars under your fund balance and buy a two hundred thousand dollar truck, they're okay with that. If you're gonna take two hundred thousand dollars out of your fund balance and pay for something that should be operating, they don't like that. The town of Bethel is a very healthy fund balance. One of the things I think that we need to talk about with this board in the future. Is a new fund balance policy to update it. That keeps us very solid between eighteen and twenty. The last one closed that over twenty-two could be twenty-three. I don't have that number.
But that's the difference of this year is we do have that.
Yes.
You don't want, we don't want that every year to have that.
Correct. And that's why I think we need to come up with a new fund balance policy that keeps us on really solid ground. Of what we do when we exceed twenty and that hopefully we never go under eighteen, cause the triple A is very important.
And you, and Brad, you and I had a conversation, and if you create a policy that talks about using those funds. To keep it a certain level, they, that helps your bond rate. Well, if it's part of your policy and you're, you're following that policy.
Yes, if you follow your policy and it's very clear what you're gonna do with it, and the policy is on solid ground.
Right, funded.
Then, yeah, they like that. They like that kind of stuff, both, you know. Like, one of the things that another town did recently, they came up with a mill rate stabilization fund. Where they take some money from their revenue if they meet their budget numbers and put it in this account. And then over the X number of years, use a portion of that as revenue for the following year. Which will reduce your mill rate, cause more revenue, the lower the mill rate goes. If you have a solid policy that's not, that's conservative and does all the right things, and you follow that policy. They're okay with that because you're telling them what you're gonna do and then you're doing it. So it's the same thing with the fund balance policy. And one, all that stuff before it come to this board to vote would be through our financial advisor and all that stuff. Because the town of Bethel, we never thought we were gonna get triple A. We have it.
And you wanna keep it.
We're gonna lose it before somebody else would. And the way to keep it is doing all the right things.
And what Brad means by that, I, I've had professional experience with the ratings. What Brad means by that is the rating agencies are really quick to punish and very slow to give you the benefit. To his point, we're in good shape. I think it does make sense, Matt Chair, that we talk about this fund.
Absolutely.
We now have, you know, we've paid off short-term debt, and that gives us flexibility to perhaps set up this. Mill rate stabilization fund. The rating agencies would not have given us credit for setting up that policy. While we still at short-term debt. So by having that paid off, I do think.
On the general, like, if we were to place a new fund balance policy before. This twenty-three budget goes into effect. Cause some of, I mean, so some of the conversations that, or that I'm interpreting that I'm hearing is sort of like, well, that's okay. It's okay if we take it out of here, cause let's just go ask the general fund. We'll just, you're saying, we'll just take it from the general.
Only because we have.
That's what you just said, so hold on. Yeah, hold that, no, that's what I'm saying. So you're saying we can take it from the general fund. And I understand we have a very healthy general fund. And, but the part two of this is what I'm hearing from Bob. Is there, we, we could be in jeopardy without a new general, let me finish, without a general fund, new. General fund balance policy. So you'll understand my question in just a second. So, stop. So, um, the new, Bob is saying, hold on, sorry. We've got twenty-three million dollars in our current general fund, correct? You're telling us that it's okay to pull from the general fund to do things like maybe a new gym floor or whatever, because it's an asset. Bob's concern is we could lose our triple A rating. Because we don't have a proper fund balance policy in place right now to get it into control. And they're very quick. So my concern is you're saying, let's pull from the general fund. I'm hearing this may not be the time to pull from the general fund, cause we could lose our triple A rating.
I know.
Can I, can I speak to that?
But if we get a new fund balance, my question is if we put a new fund balance policy in place.
Yes.
Does it affect changes so that? Will, if we make a request in, in the twenty twenty-three, in the twenty, during the twenty twenty-three budget year.
Yep.
Will that affect the rate? It's.
Can, can I jump in? Is it, is it the, having the policy in effect that affects the fundraising or do I have funding? Or is it just the number we have?
We can't dip below eighteen.
So there's, there's, there's a couple factors here. So we ended fiscal year twenty-one, so June thirtieth of twenty-one. With eighteen million, eight hundred thousand in fund balance, which is twenty-three point two nine percent. So there's two points of what you're asking. The twenty-five thousand, the twenty-two thousand, all day long, those are CNR things.
Yep.
You're really not gonna go to your fund balance for something small like that. You gotta go to a town meeting. There's mechanisms to go with that. That would be your bigger project. Say this board decides to fund the police station firing range at nine hundred thousand or whatever it is. That might be a good use of fund balance, cause it's a bigger ticket item that you could pull without having to do short-term debt or bond, something like that.
And Brad, it's an enduring asset, right? Like finishing a gym floor would not count as.
It's so minor, like twenty-five grand. It's a small thing. You should be able to take that through your CNR.
Should be operating, but.
Yes.
Can I just ask a question before you go on? What I was hearing is that we do have this, you know, surplus, the ideal is this much. And then another conversation will be about the new, about a new policy, because it's not an emergent issue. It's something that we do need to discuss.
Yeah.
But it's not a hair-on-fire issue. It can be discussed.
Yeah.
Over the next.
Yep. Yeah.
Six months or a year or?
It's something that should be done in the next year.
Right, and it's, it's a good time because as Bob Mifrida said, that we have, we've paid up all the short-term debt. It's a good situation to be in.
I still don't understand the answer to the question, because I think what Bobby Joe was asking is, with respect to our rating. Is our rating affected if we take money out of that account and using it with it? We don't have a, a plan in place. That's what, is it the lack of a plan that could affect our fund rate? Or is it fund, yeah, or is it just the, the dollar amount we have it?
It's kind of twofold. So we've used our fund balance policies out of date. It says, what do we do when we hit ten percent? We blew past ten percent. But it was written at a point that we thought we'd never get triple A. So throw that out. So we need to write a new one. So once we have the policy and we follow it, rating agencies say, good, you're following your policy. We know what you're gonna do. You need a track record of doing that. What we built in the short term without an updated fund balance policy. Is only using fund balance for long-term assets. We bought the front property. We bought Hickok. You know, like. Good uses of, so the policy helps you, cause it gives you a backbone of why you did it. Ultimately, they look at what you do. Whether you have the policy or not, the policy just makes it easier to do things. And to another point that I wanna finish before, one of the things that should be in the fund balance policy when we hit X whatever is. You wanna dump that money in probably CNR, so that then when it's in CNR, you don't need to tell me. You can move it. But you tell like, maybe you do some towards a mill rate stabilization, maybe you do some toward, you know, like. So it's, yeah.
And, and you answered my question. So Mike, like, we keep throwing around, it keeps getting thrown around, like, well, if we don't fund it, we'll just take it from the fund. Mike, you said it like four. And you said it to me in private conversations the whole day. So I just want, I just want it to. I'm just trying to understand this here, is that we keep throwing around, well, let's not give it to them here. Because we'll just pull it from a fund somewhere else. Well, from somewhere else. My concern with pulling it from just anywhere, from a fund, let's go back, let's have a town meeting, let's, I don't wanna sit here a hundred times. Sorry, I love you all very much, but I have much better things to do. Just seems crazy if it's going to very easily affect our triple A rating. It, I, I feel like we're splitting hairs. You can call me whatever you wanna do, cause I know you're going to at the end of the day. But the, but the point is, is we're splitting hairs for a dollar. And it's crazy. And then we're just saying, let's go to the general fund. Let's go here. Let's go and get this. And it's, it doesn't make, I, I'm just trying to understand.
It's actually good that we're having the conversation.
It is, cause we're having conversations.
Necessarily. And this is money that is newly.
But then we need to stop throwing the word general fund around and saying, well, if we don't fund it, you can just come back and.
I guess, so to say, there are other avenues, where people are already been taxed on the money. There are other avenues to.
But then you just told me we have a laundry list of eleven million dollars for the fund that's in it of one point two. And that eleven million dollars is ten years long, but if we only fund that capital non-recurring account at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
That list has always been way beyond what we have, though.
But it just, we're, I, I don't know. It's just crazy that we're trying to tell the police department, okay, will you spend two hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year? You're asking for two hundred and eighty thousand, so I'm gonna give you two sixty. We, at some point. It, right, it's just a point, but at some point, we need to stop splitting hairs and have some faith in our department heads. That when they come to us and say, hey, we put hours into this. And I'm, I mean, I'm talking to the board and I'm talking to the people that stood up at the public hearing. It was like, you need to do your job. We've done our job. We, we all know that. And but at some point, we also have to have faith in our department heads, that they're doing their jobs as well and coming to us with the numbers.
Are you trying to shut, shut out the conversation?
I'm not trying to shut down.
Do you wanna town council form of government and no more board of point? I'm just saying, cause there's no role here. Like, you could, you could go home and we could watch TV, like.
These, these conversations. And I'm just, my concern is we keep throwing out the general fund, and we keep throwing out using all of these different funds. I have concerns about using these different funds if it's going to affect a, a bond rating and a fund rating that we have fought so hard to do.
So the small dollar amounts that we're talking about to take from CNR, we're fine. They're not, those aren't a big deal. To your point, and I fully agree with this, we should fund the budget with what we need. And sometimes it's incremental changes. Like, I will use the legal account as a point of reference. I don't know offhand what the increase is. Last couple of years, we've inched it up to like the five-year average. We know that's not enough money, but we're trying to get it to where it needs to go. Ideally, we, if we spend three hundred thousand a year on it, we'd make it three hundred thousand and go on. So sometimes we do inch along to the right spot. My only point with like the twenty-two was. Yeah, it should be in the operating budget, cause they need five hundred thousand dollars a year to do the, maintain the schools. My only point was, if you're not gonna give it to them in this form. Let them know that we anticipate you might come back and ask for it from CNR. You know, and that was my point with bringing up the CNR, that they should come back and ask for it. Ideally, you give them the five hundred thousand so they can do it the right way and do it right the first time. Cause really, if you probably asked Terry, she probably needs six hundred thousand. So she made it five hundred, or four ninety, what, four seven, four ninety-seven, six ninety-four. Because that was the bare bones of what they think they needed for this year. So by cutting that. You should know that you're probably not meeting what they think are the absolute needs, so give them an avenue to come back to you.
I, I think we are in heated agreement. I, I don't think you should minimize your sense, right? Maybe these, this terminology is not the, what folks use every day, right? Your small business senses are spot on, which is, we should have a good practice as to how we use our, our general fund. And I think we, again, we're all saying it's best not to fund operating expenses out of the general fund. This twenty-two, nine, sixty-four, I believe would be a violation of that general rule. Maybe not significant enough to really tick off the rating agencies, but it's a step in the wrong direction. And we should, at some point, which I think we're all saying we want to do, is come back and revisit that.
I'd be willing to take it out of that to not tax the people more. The money's there already. It's tax money already. I'm not trying to not supply the schools. But they can hand us an invoice for the gym and we can pay it on that, out of the CNR account.
You'd have to prove it before they can.
And I think part of my question too was if you start to do that before you have a new fund policy in place, does that.
But you're talking about two different funds, the CNR, capital non-recurring, and the general funds. The, the CNR, it's just money that's there that.
It's that six.
It's already there.
And, and to your point.
And nobody cares.
Right, to your point, capital non-recurring is an operating expense. So to be consistent with what the rating agencies were asking us, is to take this twenty-two, nine, six, four. And maybe take it out of capital non-recurring.
Yes.
That would help us not violate the rating rule, taking operating expenses out of.
Definitely. I totally agree.
And it just now adds to the ten point seven pileup of projects that are all vying for.
Yes. And one other thing, if you remember when we did the year-end transfers, it was before this board set, the old board did. We moved four hundred thousand, that was expenses that were not spent for the year into CNR. So because it was expenses, the Board of Finance could just do it as a transfer. A fund balance policy would talk about what happens when you collect. Um, a fund bounce policy would talk about what happens when you collect more than you anticipate. So we've been doing some of these things just in different forms, like funding C N R when you have the opportunity to, like that four hundred thousand. Those are all good prac, we've been doing good practices. We just haven't had a formal policy that shows what we're doing. Like, you know, and some of it is, the, over the last eight years, the board of finances has done a lot of work. To clean up our debt service stuff and especially knowing that school renovation was coming on. We've done a lot of heavy lifting over the last eight years. Um, now's the time, let's update some of these things. And let's just get them in practice and then written down what we're, what we've been doing anyway.
But until then, we're not going to hurt the, the bond rating.
No, twenty two thousand, they're not gonna, they're not gonna bat an eye at twenty two thousand.
But to Bobby Joe's point, I just want to make sure that I, I wasn't thinking taking twenty two thousand out of the general fund. I only mentioned the general fund because this is the first time we've had this much of an excess in it and already there are projects slated for it, you know? I was just referring to as another source, not necessarily the twenty two, but some other bigger thing.
Well, I wasn't necessarily talking about the twenty two. I was just talking.
I was saying, I was saying the general.
Was that a sorry or?
Well, if that's, if that's a sorry. We're, there's a, there's a.
Is there a motion?
No, that's.
Not suggesting a special. Is today Wednesday?
No.
Wait.
Wednesday free hugging.
I've got a, I've got a wait a week. I, I, I will be here for that.
Can someone, like, could someone?
That was our discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, but there's original motion for twenty two.
Yes.
We're just talking about it.
Elaine said before we make the next motion.
We're having.
Why do we talk about it?
It's a period of mourning, a sensitive period of mourning.
I'll make sure my name played everybody could see it because this is what everybody's here for. I'd like to make a motion to reduce the count four fifty to board event by three hundred thousand dollars. I would second it for discussion.
Okay, I, I'm gonna ask why.
Because as many people spoke for it, people spoke against it, in my opinion. After the last year, after the last pub, uh, I'm sorry, I lost over our board of finance meeting. I got more con- conversations and more phone calls saying, I just can't afford it. You have to do something. Do your job. And I think, I think in a fifty two million dollar budget, I personally feel like we're supporting the board of ed. We, we didn't cut last year's spending. They added almost two million to make it fifty two million dollars.
Well, I just didn't know if there was reasoning.
Yeah, there were, there's lots of reasons. Yeah. I, I talked about it a lot. Board of Ed member Scott Clayton said that the new enrollment was one point eight million. And I think it's two point one million on the books of new spending. So three hundred. Out of a fifty two million dollar budget. I'm not sure that even registers, but at least we told the people, um, that we looked at this. And it's not that it, it, it should be cut or not cut. I feel it's, it's a, a big increase with all the COVID money out there that's buying other things. I think three hundred thousand is a token. And I, I, and I want to go back to her one second because I don't want this to get emotional, but it is emotional. Okay? I've always said in life that you tell me what you need and I'm willing to give it to you every single time. You make me feel like you didn't need that and you just wanted it. I have a real problem with that. The night of the election, I won the board of finance by five votes. A current, and I'm not going to mention the name, a current board of ed member in the hallway of the G P room. Said to me, I always encourage the superintendent to inflate the budget because we always know the board of ed is going to cut. The board of finance is going to cut. Anybody who doesn't believe me and want to offline ask me who that was in private, I will tell you what board of ed member that was. Back to my statement, if you tell me what you need, I will give you what you need every single time. But when somebody thinks that you don't need the eighty dollars and you've got a hundred. It burns every time when I have a hard time paying those taxes. So anybody offline wants to ask me what board of ed member said that to me? I will do it in front of them or I will give you the name. I'm not trying to put anybody under the bus, but that happened. Four months ago or whenever that election night was. If you go home while you're driving home and you think about what John Lennon said and what he talked about here, that's real world. It's a fifty two million dollar budget to take three hundred thousand dollars off that budget. It doesn't move the needle. But I have a mother and father, God rest their souls, that, that supported our, a big family on a landscaper's budget. And they've lived within their means and that's all I'm asking for. So if somebody doesn't tell me that we fluff the budget up because we know you're going to cut something, I might believe you need it. I'm sorry for getting emotional, but you know what? It really comes down to what the town could afford. I'm sick of people telling Republicans don't support education. I support education. I own a lot of real estate in this town and I'm banking on it's my retirement. I don't want to flatten that retirement. It's that simple.
Go ahead, somebody. John, you know, I, I come from a corporate background and I, I take your point. That generally in big budgets, right? You can make small cuts and it's the equivalent of changing the couch cushions.
Yeah, but Bob, I don't mean to interrupt, but you know what Nick says all the time? Because he's been on the board longer than I. He says, it's not the seven dollars that my budget went, like my taxes went up. It's the eight thousand that I'm having a hard time paying.
I'm going in a different direction.
Okay, yes.
Right. Last year. When we really still had a tremendous amount of uncertainty about where COVID was going. We spoke to a lot of people in town and they told us. There was a particular percentage of increase that they would accept. And I think we surveyed a lot of people. I personally surveyed almost one hundred people. I think other members of the board did the same and we, we came up with that. What we thought would be acceptable level of. And in the end, to get there. We took four hundred thousand dollars out of the board of ed budget. To this day, I lose some sleep at night thinking about that number. It's a, it's a big number. And I think it has impacted their operation. And to flesh that out a little bit, Terry, I know. But let me ask the question. Typically, what we do is we say, all right, we know it's a big budget. We know there's some moving parts, right? Retirements, maybe a high salary person goes out, a lower salary person comes in, but maybe there's no retirement. So there's a little bit of. Uncertainty in your budget. So we have said, tell us what you need. We give it to you. And by the way, at the end of the year, if there's extra. You come to us and say, oh, can I put that extra in the one or two percent fund? Or I want to return it to the general fund. We took four hundred out last year, big number. In this current year fiscal twenty two. Will you be putting any money in the two percent fund, one, one, two percent fund or the general?
It was twenty five thousand, wasn't it?
That was the end of twenty one.
Yes. You're, you're in now and has three months.
Twenty one. We, we ended and put twenty five thousand.
In fiscal year twenty one.
Ending June thirty.
Thirty. Now we're in year six thirty twenty two.
We're in now.
Three more months left.
We have just. Gone to essential serving. Um, our special education costs are up. And we, um. I'm being very, very careful because I have to make it to June thirty.
Terry, can you describe to us what essential spending means? Because I don't think we all know what that is.
Well, it means if, you know, you don't order the folders or more, you, you know, you don't order more supplies. And last year, uh, a big chunk, it wasn't a big chunk. But there was about a hundred thousand dollars that we, we went through and trimmed every supply count when we took that four hundred thousand. Reduction. So, and we did not put in a penny of it back. When we brought our proposal this year. So the cuts that you made last year are real cuts. And they're in, they're baked in to what the numbers are that we gave you for twenty two, twenty three.
And that, that suggests to me, just to be responsive to John's point, that suggests to me, there's not an extra. Kitty here.
And, and John, I appreciate that someone said that to you and I would love to have a conversation with you because I pride myself. On the fiscal responsibility in this district and I pride myself on transparency. And the board of ed, which by the way is Republican. Budget for night after night after night. So I, I am probably getting emotional too right now, but I'm trying to stay calm because. I can tell without a doubt that we do not put extras in the budget. So regardless of what that person may have said to you, it is just not true. And this lady wouldn't want it and I wouldn't want it. So I just want to go on the record to say that and I would reinforce what Terry said. We are up a hundred and thirty five more students from even the last time I talked to. And, uh, ye- yes, there is a difference between one point eight and two point one, but what about all the expenditure turns that we have with the students that we had prior to that? That's in addition to, we have more special needs, we have more access, we have greater transportation expenses. It's just reality. So when you talk about three hundred thousand dollar cuts, I know somebody's going to ask me, what does that mean? It means I have to cut kids' programs. That is the bottom line. Anything that is not a need to. And so at the end of the day, you just need to understand that. And we provided a list of things that we're going to have to start looking at and start to get across. We already have a middle summer schedule. We don't have the supplies our teachers need. We get, we're trying to get through the year this year. I just sent an email to my principals this week. That said, we cannot bring any more para educators in. We're going to have to start taking our kindergarten cares. And we're going to have to replace them to serve the special education students. That is where we are at. That is the bottom line. So three hundred thousand dollar cut is going to be impacting.
Thank you, Dr. Harper. So, so let's talk about the impact to the taxpayer if we take three hundred thousand dollars out of the budget.
Sure. So right now with the cuts that have previously been made, we'd be looking at a point three three no rate increase or point nine and seven percent. Increase in the no rate.
Over one point one.
It was one point one, now it's point nine seven. So reducing the budget by three hundred thousand dollars would make it a point one nine percent increase in those. And a point five five percent increase in tax rate.
So can you put that into dollar numbers for?
So. Average home that we've always used of an assessment of two seventeen, the three hundred thousand dollar reduction would make it forty one dollars a year. Versus seventy two.
That's going to change with the revaluation.
Really? It takes thirty dollars off their tax bill to take three hundred thousand dollars out?
Yeah.
Oh, for the year?
For the year, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So say again, we would be.
So right now.
Thirty dollars.
Yeah.
Could you, could you say, I think I, you probably said it right. I think I heard it wrong. What the increase in spending is and then what the increase in taxes. With the three hundred cut.
So with a three hundred cut. So the numeral rate would be thirty four, forty five. The current one is thirty four, twenty six. It's a point one nine increase, which percentage wise is point five five percent. So half of a percent. Um, the average home that we always use, their tax bill increase for the year would be forty one dollars and twenty seven cents.
So you pay an additional forty one dollars.
With the three hundred thou- thousand dollar deduction. Without the three hundred thousand dollar deductions with what's been voted on already and approved by this board. You'd be at a point three three increase in bills or point nine seven percent. Or seventy two dollars for the average home.
So the difference then is thirty one dollars.
Yeah.
Thirty one dollars. So for thirty one dollars per average home.
Yes.
We're going to cut things like sports and band and all the extracurriculars that. Help kids get a well rounded.
You mean.
Child, childhood and adolescence.
You mean, you mean like winter guard. I, I think you guys call it a club. So I pay for that. You mean.
No, sir. You don't pay for the stipends for the director. You don't pay for the transportation. You do pay as a parent.
Okay. Cause I see checks out of my check for a lot of times. So.
And band parents pay a little bit of a balance or whatever, but the board funds most of that. So.
No public comment.
There is no.
Bill, you need to mute yourself.
Call order, no public comment.
Okay.
He's trying to say that.
It's the superintendent. Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
You only, you pay a portion of it, um, to help supplement some of the extras that the.
So that could happen in other programs, right? Like R O T C. Maybe, maybe a parent would be able to help with that and then it would take the burden off of some other taxpayers that maybe not afford it.
So you're suggesting to raise fees for families?
We're raising permits on builders. Well, that's been a suggestion.
It's not.
But there's no public comment, but thanks for addressing.
But anyways, um, it, 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 uh, it's, um, that's, there are a lot of extracurricular programs that we have. There's a lot of programs that we have to support families and I think there's a perception among some parents that they, they pay a big portion of, you actually don't. And we pay most of it.
Thank you.
So. I think that we have to look at it though. It's in not just forty dollars, but we're having a revaluation. That's going to really change. I know it's going to change the value of my home into something that's really not worth. But that's going to happen and just the prices of things, the gasoline prices. I mean, this is not just in a, in a. Isolated thing, that forty dollars.
But their prices go up too.
I understand that. I understand that.
I want to hear what you guys have to say.
I just, yeah, we'll all get to talk. I just wanted to say that it's like, um. That's why I was so happy to hear these notes of activism because a lot of this stuff, you know? The three hundred coming out, yeah, but the, the stuff that comes from the state is unbearable. And people have to push back because we can't do this every year. We can't go up to fifty two million, fifty five billion. It's just, you know, and we'll be moving out and I'll be moving out. I have to. It's just, that's the thing that sticks in everybody's craw that I talk to. So. And I know, Dr. Harper, you are busy doing that, but I don't know. There's got to be a ramp up of it because it can't just be. And not from you, but I mean, just as a group or lobby or whatever you want to call it. Um, there seems to be this very single minded, not from you, but from certain people, the ones that attack us on Facebook, but just. Not only like in a, in a vacuum and it can't be that way anymore. I mean, I think we've gone to the tipping point. Do you not agree?
I don't disagree. I mean, there has to be.
There has to be.
See, I'm, I, to, to the point of the public hearing, I got in the rankings later for tomorrow, how to contact your legislature.
Yay.
I actually put, um, I linked all the, um, for the past four years of. Fields that affect in education. That's not going to solve it.
No, it's not going to solve it now, but I'm just saying we have to have that in the forefront because. We, we can't be your activists and the board of finance. We have to, you know, we all have to do what we can do.
And, and real, and real quick, if you go out there and see all those first selectments out there and you look at Charlie Steck, that wasn't that long ago. His last budget was fifty two million dollars for the whole town. And we're fifty two just for the school now. That's just the reality. So where do we go?
How long ago was that, Nick?
That, that's what I'm saying. It wasn't that long ago to me. Oh, you don't know what Charlie Steck was?
I live in front of him. But I've been here twenty years and Charlie Stuck was not first elected.
That was twenty five years ago and I don't think that's a very fair comparison.
Okay.
But it's just, I would, I would like to.
We were all getting along really well, Matt. So.
Right, Matt, we got this.
Excuse me, I'm an expert. I would like to address two things.
There's a couple of people that are just waiting to speak.
Okay, but I, I wanted to correct something. We've not made a decision to raise.
Point of order.
We know that.
There was discussion.
Yes, it's been suggested every year for ten years, but it hasn't, there, there's, there's no dis.
That's been determined already. You don't have to correct it. We already know that.
Well, that wasn't, that was, thank you. That wasn't true to me. Number two. Uh, the revow is, in, in my opinion, I would like to share this, is not a reason to approve or disapprove a budget because. As values change, say the value goes up. The revenue is the same.
I understand. Thank you.
But, but if commercial is different, a, a different evaluation, if commercial goes down, the burden is on single family homes. Or if condos go up. Or if condos go up, the, the burden could be on commercials. So that's a fair statement.
But we don't know that yet.
I, I, yeah.
No, what I'm, what I mean is you said if, if the evaluation goes up.
There's a point of order because we, you know, we need to get back to our motion. Everything you're saying, thank you, but there were, and I think, didn't you wanna say something?
Well, I have a question. Um, so regard, cuz it's regarding the three hundred thousand, back, so back to the discussion. Um, just trying to understand and have a discussion, you, and see if we can come up with something. And back and forth like.
I love that idea.
So, also I have a question. So a question for Brad. Brad?
Yes.
Um, I believe in your numbers, you put six percent for town health. And again, this is a newbie question. I believe Board of Ed has eight percent in, in their health benefits. Are we pulling health benefit numbers from two, like again, not under, like, do benefits come from two, two different places? So does one or does, or is it the same?
The.
So I'm just curious as to why the numbers are, you know what I mean? Like, it, it's just a question.
So at one point, the state was talking about six percent. So that's what I put in.
Okay.
Right before the budget started, they bumped it up to eight percent.
Right, okay.
I left my number at six. But the difference between six and eight for me is thirty or forty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And I said to the board during my presentation, I don't know what's gonna happen with that.
Right.
I think that's a number that you might be able to make up because we have negotiations and unions play premium cost shares and stuff like that. You might be able to make up some of that. For the Board of Ed, that's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. It's because there's such a, so much bigger of a pool.
Right.
Um, and just for your own benefit, I emailed our insurance, health insurance broker yesterday and asked if there's been any change. She said no. And I emailed the guy from the state and he said they're hoping to finalize them in the next month.
But it's eight percent now.
It's still, yes, it has not changed.
So they're expecting it to be eight percent. So their number, so your number in the budget of eight percent is.
To be honest, I mean, it's the real percent.
Because it was ten percent for like five minutes and then they changed it.
Not said, and, and they've worded things in a way that has me with a concern.
Right.
And initially I bank on it, then it's going to come down.
Right.
But the way they've worded things to us this year, my concern is that it will be higher.
Right. So there's like, I mean, I, I may not ask it cuz you're, you're really, there's nowhere in here. First at first, I, I, I came in thinking that there might have been.
Give me a budget of what you need. I, we gave you a budget of what we need. And I will, I, if you give, give me one minute. We talked about this a little bit at our presentation. The costs of special education, not only here, in every district. When I talk to every one of my colleagues in all one hundred and sixty-nine districts in the state, the, the effect of the pandemic on our most fragile children has been significant. We have three additional out placements now that we didn't plan on. We've told you the cost of out placements.
Just three hundred, would be three, about three hundred?
About three hundred thousand. I have a neighboring district that I speak to at this municipal all the time. Eight additional out placements this year. They are a million dollars over. I told you we're freezing. We gotta get to June thirtieth. We're doing everything we can to manage within what we asked for last year. What we asked for for twenty-two, twenty-three is what we need.
I have nothing else.
I, I wanna weigh in on, on the insurance because that's, I, I've looked at this budget over and over and over again. Something that, you know, Joe brought up earlier is there's been this sense of that the budget is padded every year. And, and frankly, I think the, the truth of the matter is you're probably victims of your own success. Because, you know, listen, at the end of the day, trying to, trying to wangle a budget at this size and, and, and really get it down to the end is hard. There's no question about it. Um, when I, when I first started looking at the budget, I was looking at those numbers historically. And I was thinking about three hundred thousand dollars a year. It's kind of coming back into the till. And why don't we look at that for the taxpayer? That, that was my number when I was looking at it. Then I realized, you know, what has been going on coming out of the pandemic, what it's done to our town and what's done to our kids and and I don't, and, and I believe you in those conversations we've had, I believe Brad, that, that we've reached a new era in budgeting, at, at least for right now. Um, I know there's been people who have gone out there, boards of education folks who, you know, flippantly said, oh yeah, we build an extra and, you know. I don't know why they do that. And the, the, the truth of the matter is, I think overall, we have a pretty decent budget. Um, in any other year, I think we could heroes. Like with the facial and going out of control and we got three point eight percent budget, that, that's not awful. Now, at the same time, we need to squeeze every frequent dollar out of it. We have to. That's our job as a board of directors. And when I came into the last meeting, we kind of broke down here a little bit. Um, I was, I was looking to make some cuts. And, and I felt like that three hundred thousand dollars, well, I thought that was still there. It's not. The only place I, I think, out of all this budget is that insurance piece that we don't know what's gonna happen. So to be honest, I'm, I'm going to make a motion at some point to split the difference with you and risk. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, instead of a hundred grand, I'm gonna cut ninety, I'm gonna cut ninety thousand dollars out of that. And if it goes up, it would come back to us. You're gonna have our support, or my support, let's be fair to the others. If it doesn't go up, well, put, put the other ninety grand towards something that works for the kids. But I do think that's the one place because it's very uncertain. Um, we don't know what's gonna happen with it. I know you're, you're down to the edge, but I think that's one thing, it's fair to get something back to the taxpayers. It's small, but it matters. It matters to everybody. So that's kind of how I feel about it. Um.
That's a suggestion because we don't have any.
I, 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 it's a suggestion, I know that, but I, but I, at, at the same time, it's, we're family, right? We're in the same town. At some point, we gotta start trusting each other. And we gotta start looking at each other and like, we can go out one day, you could say, hey, we got the best freaking superintendent in all Connecticut. But then not to believe her entirely on the budget and everything's padded. That's been a real difficult thing for me through this budget process. It's just, and, and listen, maybe part of it is being new and not having my eyes open to the budget, but I think they've given me all the information. And um, I think in some years, yeah, they, they're victims of their own success. They go out and they manage this budget so well and they have a little bit left over at the end. And I don't think it was on purpose. I think they just did a good job.
They do a good job every year.
And I know they got hit hard last time. I'm, I'm very concerned about the summer school program, the middle summer school got cut. And, and I don't want any more cuts. At the same time, I wanna do something that's meaningful. It's hard to do the meaningful with fifty-two million dollar budget anyway. But I think the principle is that we want to get every dollar out of it. So I think that's what I, I'm at some point gonna talk about, Glenn.
No.
I mean, that's, that's what I hope. So thank you for the good work you've done.
Okay, we have, there's a motion.
So, so. Yeah, he doesn't have a motion yet. I wanna try my motion, but if Nick's willing to second my motion, I don't might think my three hundred's gonna work. I would amend my motion to make it two hundred thousand if Nick's willing to second that. And then I would ask to move the question and have that to go to a vote.
Okay.
Only cuz you're. Thanks.
So that's, yes, you're seconding that?
I was asked, Adam Chair.
Move the question.
Move that question.
Well, unless someone has a question before you move.
Well, were we just discussing?
Ask the question.
Well, I'd like to discuss then.
I mean, we have to vote on moving the question, so.
Uh, is there a second to the motion to move?
Second to move it.
Okay, all in favor of moving the question, say aye.
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 Okay, so who? Three of you?
Cuz we've been discussing, but it failed, so.
It's almost the same discussion, but Dee, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanna be clear that at three hundred thousand, which I know it was just amended to be two hundred thousand. The average homeowner, which we use a three hundred thousand dollar market value in this town as the average homeowner, which may change with the revaluation, but it hasn't yet. Three hundred thousand dollar homeowner is gonna be saving two dollars and fifty-eight cents a month with a three hundred thousand dollar reduction. So they save, you know, even less than that with a two hundred thousand dollar reduction. If you own a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, which maybe that's a condo, I don't even know if you can buy that here anymore. You save a dollar fifty a month or less than that if you take two hundred thousand dollars out.
It sounds like you're supporting my motion.
And if, really?
No, it does.
And if you have a nine hundred thousand dollar home, which we have several of those these days, you are actually only going to save nine dollars a month. If you take three hundred thousand dollars away from this budget that has so clearly and passionately been described as bare bones. Now, I understand people are on a fixed income and I understand every dollar counts. But I find it very hard to believe that any of those folks who are on a fixed income with a three hundred thousand dollar home are thinking two dollars and fifty-eight cents a month and taking all of the joy out of our schools in terms of our extracurriculars and things that are not mandated, really makes sense to me.
You're assuming that people are consciously doing that, that that's what in their minds, that they're taking away something, you know what I'm saying?
No, I don't know what you're saying.
Well, it's not, there's a conservative point of view that has to do with restrained spending or, you know, we're very conscious of spending increases. It's not the four dollars a month or the one fifty a month. And also it's cumulative. So if you took the past ten years, I know what I was paying when I moved here or when I bought my house. Um, it's a lot more, you know, the taxes are a lot more. But the point is that it's just a conservative viewpoint. We're not trying to take away anything from anybody. So you kind of put that on, you put, you put that on.
But Cynthia, it's the reality. When you don't fund a budget that they're saying it's, it's bare bones. This is, this is really less than we actually need, but we're gonna make do. You are going to take away from our children, not from adults, but from children.
We, we voted down a turf field. Now someone's privately funding it.
So do you think someone's gonna come in and privately fund the activities for all of our children?
You know what? That's one way to do it.
So if we're a family, is that what we do?
Well, that, well, if you're my family, leave me, we'd be uh, eating boiled, boiled potatoes.
We appreciate your opinions, but.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I just wanna put it in perspective, so.
But if you take the two, two family cars, because that went up a million and a half dollars because of the value of cars, so add that money that everybody's paying, you know, okay?
Right, but.
It's not just two dollars a day.
Absolutely, but it is in terms of home values, right, and home taxes.
But the, the tax, the, when your phone comes up and how much taxes you paid.
We, yeah. I wanna level set for everyone the actual savings we're talking about.
It happens every year. It's always the same savings. It's like four dollars here, six dollars here. It's always that, every year.
And you have, then you have to wonder why we're spending so much time on this really.
Again, it's not, it's just not about that.
So it, it's cut because you can, is that the point?
No.
No, it's because, you know, I know for me, I do have other ideas on how things can be funded.
Okay.
So, and so I, so that's what I mean. I'm not saying have the kids go without. It's just my belief that perhaps the parents of the children or students or, I don't know what they call them, these learners, could, you know, pony up a little more for the activity. To me, that's a solution. Now, you might say no, but then I say, there's a percentage of the town. It's a much smaller percentage. The people at large are just living. They're not necessarily involved in it. Not that it doesn't benefit the whole town. Yes, it does. But there's nothing wrong with having an ideology that says, maybe we can do it with some private funding. So that's the difference between what you and I think.
I, I wouldn't simplify it to that, Cynthia, but I think what you are asking is that the families who have two or three children depending on them should ante up more money for the kinds of things that make.
You're asking every taxpayer. Yeah, so you're asking every taxpayer to pay for it.
But if we're a family.
No, we're not a family. We're not that, right? So whoever said we're a family, I, I object, Your Honor.
Okay.
I mean, it's fine.
What I believe, I believe, I believe this is a good budget overall. We've got one, we've got one little piece of the.
Lot of community, but as I pointed out, there are some, you know, disparate issues. And so you can't deny it. I'm saying there's an ideology that's, you know, there's friction in the ideology. It's not that we don't want what's best. We think that there are different ways to get it. That's all. I don't think everything has to come from taxes. That's just me. So.
I think John made a good compromise at two hundred, so I think.
I agree with you one hundred percent. So are we, are we moving that question? We're gonna vote on that?
Well, if there's any other discussion.
If there's no other discussion, I would like to vote on this motion. Okay. All in favor of reducing Department four fifty, line five seven oh one, Board of Education by three, uh, two hundred thousand dollars, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed.
Nay.
That's a lot, nay, that counts for two.
That was very loud. That was a long.
Two names.
I'd like to make a motion. What's the account?
Carrie for?
For, yeah, for, I'd like to make a motion to reduce four fifty account by ninety thousand dollars. Is that, is that?
Okay.
The discussion?
I think we did it three and then we did it two.
And but your, your ninety thousand is coming from?
I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking at, listen, we have an estimate on what the insurance is. And it's, it honestly, it's the only thing in there that is wiggle room, I think. You get, you guys have put together a very good budget. And, and at the time where we're coming out with this pandemic, it, uh, I know we've had a lot of money. We should address the fact that you got a lot of COVID money going into this. But I think everything that I've seen is that COVID money was spent on things where it should have been spent to help get people through this. And I understood, listen, I was on the Special Education Advisory Council in the state. I understand the needs of special ed. I understand it hasn't been funded for years. And our kids suffer by that and it stinks. I also understand the fact that we have unfunded mandates because, you know, frankly, people keep voting for the same idiots who support those mandates over and over again. And I don't understand why. I fought it for many years, but we can't make the kids suffer because of the mandates. It can't be something where we just go, hey, y'all, we're gonna cut your budget. You guys, you guys go cry to heart for it. It just, that, that is not something I, I can work with. So that's, that's it for me. I, I think there's a little wiggle room there. I, I'd like to see in a couple of months what happens. Um, if you get hammered with it, I think we get together and we figure out a way through it together.
Is that, is that a pot? So Dan, you're saying you would like to see, I mean, obviously we can't give advice, we can't say we're caught within Board of Ed.
No, we, we can't. We have no purview of, of any of that.
Is, I mean.
Like, where would that money come from? Like, I think what you're asking is.
Right.
Where are the ninety thousand dollars?
Right, so we're, so what I think Dan is hoping is that that money would come from when the real number of the health insurance votes come in. If they're, you know, if they, if they, we, obviously we can't tell them where to take it from. If they were to take it and reduce their health insurance to six percent or whatever, to get it to ninety thousand, seven percent. And then all of a sudden it comes back in at ten percent, can they come and say, hey, our health insurance came in at ten percent, we need more money?
That's a question for Cynthia, where would?
That's a question for our honey grad.
You have to wait until at some point in the year, your operating number to revenue, doesn't need the expenses.
Right.
So, and there's no pot of money.
No, we know, we sure to do a little. Here's some more to go.
There is a pot of money. You just can't use it for that.
Yeah, it's.
It's operating. Yeah, you're not buying a truck or something.
It's a lockbox, like they talk about. Right. And so we're saying it came in at six percent and there was that money, would we get it back?
Well, yeah, we, we were getting that, so that's, yeah.
And I think Terry, I think Terry, I heard you say you're gonna be happy if it comes in at eight percent because you're concerned it.
It was ten percent, five minutes, wasn't it?
If it goes to seven and a half, we're there.
Right.
To be honest, um, you know, I mean, we, we put a budget together, what we, I, I will say, um, it's been an honor to work in Bethel. We have, we have an excellent school system. Engaging budget to continue excellence.
First one, Adam Chair, where are we?
Well, we're in that, another world of between.
A motion to second and, and there's no more discussion.
Discussion and then a vote. So there is no further discussion. All in favor of reducing Department four fifty, line five seven oh one by ninety thousand dollars, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Yeah.
I oppose it.
So are there any other motions?
I'm sorry, what was, I'm slow. What was the, what was the?
One sec, Dan Zio, when they voted for the ninety thousand.
Tell me, entertain a motion to adjourn.
We're doing, Chairman, I got one question. Now we have the first selectment. Question came earlier about the police budget and whether the light bar was removed from the budget or not. I think we voted, we voted on it, but I would like to know.
It was not.
It was not removed.
Oh, was it?
But so this money is not that.
No, 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 no. I'm not, I'm, at the end of the day, I'm asking if we can have a. I'm not, at the end of the day, I'm asking if we can have a discussion because you have the first left in here. There was information provided that the light bar was removed from the budget already.
My understanding is it was, it wasn't a line item. We took out the car plus accessories, a dollar amount, which included that. If I asked Brad to.
So, I, I could be more. Um. I let the chief know what happened to the police budget. Cause that's standard practice, saying this part, Matt, I reached out. He said, need the light bar, plus the light bars two or three, not seven. So I, I wasn't privy to Nick and Steve's conversation.
We can have a three-way conversation in the morning.
So.
Yeah, can we?
It's not that I came up with 7200.
Yeah, a point of order.
We never cut, that was never, never talked about cutting that additional light bar. We talked about moving the car to capital non-recurring.
That's right, but we, but we took all the accessories as a lump sum. So you're right, we didn't vote on the light bar itself, but we took out a chunk of money.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Brad. This is additional equipment, not for the new cars.
Right.
This is for the existing cars when they need to upgrade.
Right.
All I'm saying is it's already in the budget.
So the, the board of selectmen cut 45,000.
Yes, we did. We've already taken it out. We took out 7200, right back.
Well, let's hear about the board of selectmen.
So, the board of selectmen cut 45,000 for a car. So that was a car and everything that goes with that one car. To Brian's point, he does budget the other cars that are still in his budget. For sure. Not always the light bars move over. So I think he has in his capital equipment, other light bars to move some of this stuff.
Yes.
So my understanding is we just took a light bar out that he need.
Correct.
Okay.
That's my understanding as well.
But it doesn't cost as much as we took. It's not as expensive.
Right, you just said it's two to three, or chief said it's.
Chief said it's two or three, not seven.
Where did we get that? Amount from?
Eight, eight, all the, that goes with the car changer or it might be seven, I don't know. I don't know, the chief knows.
When we said, when Nick and I sat down with you, that was the number we got for the light bar.
That's the number, I think, that.
That I carried because that's what Pugner and I had a conversation with.
Okay.
We'll have a three-way conversation in the morning. The motion passed, so.
Okay, so the motion would pass, but let me ask you this. Are we able to make the motion to put back a light bar at three grand? Or somebody who voted in the affirmative can make a motion reconsider. Which.
And we're discussing the budget, you can make any motion you want still.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the 7200 motion passed. I thought the thousand.
The thousand passed and the 7200.
Seventy.
There, like I said, if there are no further motions.
Of the thousand and then 72.
If you want to make another motion, you're welcome to make another motion.
So, what, I, I'm just entertaining the discussion. I actually can't make, I mean, I could make the motion to put it back in.
Yes, you can.
It'd be more appropriate if someone were to make, make the motion reconsider.
Not at all. It's already been voted on, so.
Actually, you can make a motion reconsider if you're doing it the same day.
I don't want to reconsider if that's what you're.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not.
Well, but I voted in favor.
Right.
So I would make a motion to reconsider if we had new information.
Okay.
So I think we have new information. Who knows what happened in the.
So, meantime, the chief said he's going to hop on the Zoom. So he can answer any questions.
Yeah, that works.
I, I just want to know, they didn't leave to be moved, there is a board event. They started, they recessed so they could be in there, more of that discussion.
What you're saying.
This is a deviation from Robert's rules, just so you know.
Actually, it's not.
Well, no, when you.
Well, that, that I don't know why the chief is.
To, to even interact is a, is a departure. So what I'm saying is now we're, you know, this late breaking news. I don't even know.
So, so, if we were in a point of order, I mean, we can, we could have these discussions because we have the first selectman's and ex official member in the board.
Of course it is.
So I asked if, if in fact we were operating on the information we thought we were, because I had a conversation with chief, the light bar was already taken out.
This is another light bar that's, that's for service oriented, if someone breaks one. Nothing to do with the car that was.
I'm talking about pulling in Chief Pugner, which is a departure.
I didn't say that.
Yeah, so I asked him to hop on in case you guys have questions.
Yeah.
If you don't have questions.
Chief Pugner, you need to.
And Chair, you can say stuff like that.
Well, he doesn't, unless they ask him a question, he can't just, it's, there's no public comment. So if they ask him a question, he can be in there available.
Yeah, right.
But Matt's a member, so Matt can speak. But when they're asking Christine questions, she can join. If they don't have any questions for Steve, then Steve has to stay muted and he can't. Add to the conversation.
I, I'd like to ask the question only because I'd like to at least have the same facts.
Carrie?
Right, if we all have the same facts, we might disagree in the conclusion, but as long as, I'd like to make sure.
Ask away.
So what's the story, is he on?
Yeah.
Yes. Says Stephen's.
Oh, chief.
And he left.
Where do you go?
Who seconded the motion to reconsider?
We actually never made the motion here.
No, there was no motion made. There was an emotion made yet.
Oh, that was an emotion you made?
Do I need to make a motion?
No, not to talk to the chief.
To get, no, let's get the facts.
Yes, and then you can make the motion to be, that's what, it kind of gets stuck.
I heard the words. I just assumed it was in the.
It's just in the incubating phase.
There's a police badge there. Who's that?
Bill Oakes.
I thought it was a door. Bill Oakes is a police officer.
Is he awesome? Well.
He works for.
He's impersonating him.
That's a Bethel badge, but that's fine.
I know.
It's cheap. I don't see a shot. From Steve Pugner. I'm not wrong on my number.
No, no, I understand.
And where do you think the COVID $1,000 came from?
No, I.
I mean, I make that up too?
No, no, I didn't see him make anything up.
I think there's confusion about.
Okay, he's available.
The dollar amount is no side.
He's unmuted.
Okay.
Chief, can you hear us?
I'm sorry, guys. Yes, I'm sorry. It was a bad zone. It should be better now. All right, are you there? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay.
Chief, can you, we made a motion earlier to take 7200 out of. Your Department 5403 for a light bar. With, we thought your assessment that you didn't need.
Uh, no, um, we cut the one car back. At the, well, the board of selectmen cut the one car and with that they took out the light bar and the computer then. So, and plus a light bar is a lot less than 7200.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Steve, Nick Ellis here. If you remember when this whole thing started about, you know, you really need the officers. Then we came up with that creative to buy the, the other car out of the, the non-recurring account. And I said, I need some bones here. And we came up with a $1,000 COVID money, 7200 in a light bar. And I wanted the extra half of officer. You were going to be happy with getting one officer, but this, this committee gave you an officer and a half. So, do you remember that conversation when I was in my truck?
Not this, not the 7200, it was the car with a light bar. I don't have the breakdown in front of me, maybe Brad does, but I believe a light bar is 2,400, I want to say. And one computer, which that would have totaled 54, but we took that out, or the board of selectmen took that out already. So there was no additional 72 or 74, or whatever you're, you're talking about.
So you don't remember the conversation you and I had about 7200 and the COVID money and half officer?
No, I remember the conversation, but I don't remember.
I just want to make sure that we remember that conversation.
No, it was, it was the car, the computer with the car and the light bar with the car. Which, like I said, it was already taken out by the board of selectmen.
So Steve, one of the thing that's in the open gov breakdowns is vehicle light bar 7200.
That's the total.
That's.
Yeah, that's more.
That's three of them. 2,400.
It's nothing to do with a new car fit up.
No.
It's long, it's all lined all by itself. If you get it, well, Brad's looking at open.
Hold on, let's, let's.
But so, so what happens, so if you look at the original budget request. A vehicle's round numbers, 35,000, changeover of each vehicle, 7,300, uh, 6,300.
Correct.
And then vehicle light bars is another item at 7200. So is the 7200 was probably three light bars at 2,400 each. So when you take 2,400 plus the 6,300 vehicle changeover, plus the 35, you get close to 45,000. That the board of selectmen cut for one vehicle.
Correct. So Nick's correct is what he's saying, but the board of selectmen already took that out.
Well, who's saying that? But Brian didn't, it's, it's 7200 in a line in 5403.
Yes, but I think when they did the 45,000 out.
We just talked about 7200.
Yeah.
Hold on, I think they built a car out of the base amount.
Everybody's getting the car confused. It's not when you buy a new car. The 45 is with all the equipment for the new car. This is a separate line for 7200 and it's got light bar on it.
It's light bars.
They're getting all new light bars for all new cars.
Just listen to Chief Pugner. What is the disparity between what you're saying and what Nick Ellis is saying?
I think what Nick is saying, what Nick is saying is correct, but the board of selectmen already cut out what he's thinking that he needs to cut out now, that's all. So it's already been cut out. One of the light bars was already cut out. And the car computer was already cut out too, if you remember correctly. It was like 3,000 to 35. I'm, I'm literally sitting in my car, I don't have any. Things in front of me. If you give me another five minutes, I could, but.
Have a light bar.
Um, so everything was, was, was cut out of that already that Nick is talking about.
The select. But Steve, when, when, when the three cars or the four cars, all that money on that, when it says cars, it's with equipment. The first selectman cut a car and equipment. It's not the 7200 on, on that, because the dollar amount for the car is all equipped with the car.
So in the budget, he has it broken out. So it's four vehicles. In his initial request, four vehicles, $139,000, which works out to $35,000 each roughly. Um, then he has the changeover of four vehicles at 25,200, which is 6,300.
Right.
Then a lower, he's got computer hardware, $8,500, which I don't know if that's for cars or not. Then he has 7200 vehicle light bars. Um, so I think when you take a part of the 7200. The 6,300 changeover and the price of the car gets to you to like 43,000. And the board of selectmen cut a nice even 45,000.
That's what, that's what I was thinking.
And that paid for the light bar that Dan was referring to, but the 72 was another lineup.
Yes, but I think the 72 that's in there is multiple light bars.
Yes, I understand what's happening. It's like building a car.
But the new car got equipped.
Well, that's the question, John. You've identified the question.
The new car got equipped. The 72 is in addition, just like Nick has been saying all evening.
But see, what I'm hearing now is that, let's say 35,000 is the base amount for the car, then you add a light bar for 2,300.
And get to 45 or 43.
But then if you do that four times with 7200, you don't have 7200 anymore because you picked a light bar out of that column.
No, that's.
I think that.
Well, if it's separate, then.
It's separate.
What's the most?
Just like Nick said, it's separate. The 72 was for light bars to go in the closet until some broke later. The 43 for the car was the car.
With the.
Very good. I just don't understand it with, in terms of what Chief Pugner is saying, because, because I understand what you're saying. And he's saying that's not the case. So.
Chief Pugner, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Look at the minutes.
I, I think it's, I think it's, it's very simple. Everything that Nick is talking about was already cut. The car, the light bar for the car, the computer for the car was already cut. And then you guys took it out of capital non-recurring now.
He's right, that was the 45, but Nick's saying there's another line item with 7200.
No, no, no.
For extra light bars.
The 45 included one of those light bars, but they took it out all at once. They didn't take it out like line by line. They just took it out of the, the whole category, was a capital equipment. They just took 45, correct me if I'm wrong, Brad, but the, the total was already taken out of what we talked about. And that got moved into capital non-recurring. So those three light bars.
Before, the car was 35. That, that we, we approved 45. So if the car's 35, the equipment is 10, I'm using round number, is 45. What Nick is saying is, was, we took out 45, but we paid for it a different way, but there's another line item of 7200. So.
And Brad, 72 divided by three is. So, but, all right, so there's three line items in this capital account that went to cars. 138,780, which is, was four vehicles. Then you add 25,200, the changeover of four vehicles. Then you have light bars of 7200. So all that entails is 171,000.
Divided by four.
When you divide by four, you get to 42,795.
So we funded it 3,000 too much.
No, but they cut 45,000. So they cut a car plus 3,000 initially.
But we funded the whole 45 that they cut, didn't we? And, and from non-recurring.
Yes, we did.
We funded the whole thing.
Yes, we did.
So, so they cut 45, we gave them the 45, so they got paid for the light bar right in that non-recurring fund.
Yep.
Did you cut the 45 out or did you shift it to capital non-recurring?
No, we did. We had to.
We paid for it.
No, no, so.
He recommended that we did it and we took it out of C N R.
And we, and we paid for it.
So the board of selectmen reduced their budget by 45,000. Same night they made a recommendation of the board of finance.
And we thought that was a wonderful idea and we ended immediately for 45.
It's my idea.
Why didn't we just cut about the 7200 out then?
Because I need those for light bars for the new cars.
Can we let the chief speak as he can try to answer the question?
Yeah, if you cut the 70, if you cut the 7200, I have no light bars for the new cars. We'll have cars that sit in the back lot with no light bars. I have three new cars.
Three cars that are in the system, it's still in the budget, correct?
Yeah, I still need money for three new light.
There's your automatic car, man.
Okay, what's your Venmo account? Why are you saying the 200?
Okay, let me, maybe, maybe, let me test, let me test the, the thinking here. The chief's original budget asked for four cars, right? With all the equipment, including light bars, computers, the whole shooting match. Ward of selectmen took out one car and the things, all the stuff with it, paid out non-recurring. So take that off the table. You still have three cars in this budget and they need light bars.
They got the 45.
That's, oh, you're not, listen, car one, car two, car three, car four. Equipment, 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 equip. We took four, car number four off the table. Cars one, two, and three still need light bars. That's what that line is for. So you took it out, so now he's going to get three new cars with no light bars.
What was that, the, the request of four cars was how much divided by four?
171, 180.
Divided by four is what?
42, 795.
Okay, so a car was 35.
That's the base amount.
$7,000 to pay for equipment, so it's not, do you understand what I mean that?
Yeah, but that's for one car. I know exactly what you're saying.
Yeah.
We built, we built the car. They're, they're built from three lines, three outlines. That's, that's what he's saying. That's what the chief is saying.
To buy the car, I'm sorry. They, the, the board of selectmen approved three cars for a total of 43,000. That 43,000 is equipped with the radio and the lights.
Because they took it from the other amounts of the lines.
But it's a different amount. It's taking, the dealership is getting one account for 35.
Yes.
Then out of the 72, they're taking a light bar.
That's the light bar, then a computer.
Even though the dollar amount's there, it's coming out of three different accounts.
Yes, I totally get it. We need to reverse our decision.
The dollar amount's there, but Matt is saying that, that. Me and the chief had a conversation 7200. I didn't do open governor, open gov, that I got 72 for, out of his mouth.
Right, because that was before this happened, that even the board of selectmen meeting happened. That was before this.
Yeah, 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 for the record, for, for, for the record, I, I, I never said anything about 7200. I just said a computer and a light bar. Never said, the 7200's for all the light bars next, so I would never agree to that.
Okay, so my motion, I'll change it. How much is?
We're not going to just, we're just going to barrel down the freeway here. You had wanted to make a motion to reconsider.
Yes.
So why don't we do that?
I, motion is first to reconsider and then the substantive motion comes second?
Correct.
Right.
I would like to make a motion to reconsider the prior adjustment to account twenty dash three sixty fifty four zero.
Or the amount of that seventy.
Seventy two hundred.
I will second that. All in favor of reconsidering that, uh, act? Okay.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Oppose?
I oppose.
Oh, okay. That passed. Now, wait, Nick opposed it?
Yeah.
So now the substantive motion is.
So, so the substantive motion, we're reconsidering the original motion.
Yes.
So there's a motion now on the floor to strip seven thousand two hundred dollars out of the budget.
Okay.
I, as per primitive discussion, I think we've had it.
I don't want any more discussion.
So Madam Chairman, I think we should, should probably vote not, I, I would have, I would say vote against stripping the seventy two hundred.
Well, why don't we just, since we have had so much discussion, why don't we just vote on it?
But you gotta hear the motion first.
The motion, the motion's already on the floor.
You can do it either way. You can either vote not to strip it or you can vote to put it back in. I mean.
Let's just.
Maybe, okay.
Now, unify the vote or whatever, whatever.
Technically, the same, technically the same motion is back on the floor.
Correct.
Okay, so we should vote down the motion.
Yes.
Okay, okay, here we go. There's a motion. Again, there's more motion to reduce uh, Department.
Three sixty.
Three sixty line, thank you, Nick. In the amount of seventy two hundred dollars. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Abstained?
No, I, I'm the other way, so.
So you, that is the original motion, so you want to vote yea for it?
You want to vote, yes, yeah.
Cynthia.
I thought.
I want, I want to stay in from the vote because I'm not gonna ask the forty three, the forty five, the car invoice, so.
I understand what happened and I feel comfortable with my decision.
Fred, do you need?
We will clear this here out. I can't believe you people are so.
We can't, we can't run away yet.
Solid.
Do you have dollar amounts for the motion, Brad?
I think so. All right.
So. Did we take sixteen thousand out or seventeen?
Uh, so you don't need a motion on the Board of Ed because it's the same motion. So the new total town operating, um, including debt service and Board of Ed maintenance is thirty four million, two hundred and forty six thousand five eighty six. So thirty four, two four six five eight six.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion? I'll make a motion.
You need a motion, you need to vote on the.
The town.
Dollar amount. I'll give all three numbers.
Okay.
So yeah.
Somebody.
So the, the Board of Ed is still fifty one, zero seven four eight three one, so fifty one million. Wait, hold on. Nope, that is wrong. Let me update.
Want to make it fifty five even?
So the ninety thousand.
It's only like twelve dollars.
The ninety thousand failed, so let me remove that. I try to give numbers and then sometimes I gotta make mistakes. All right, so the Board of Ed didn't change. Fifty one million, one hundred and sixty four thousand eight thirty one.
Could you say it one more time?
Yep, fifty four, uh. Fifty five. Fifty one, one six four eight three one. Terry, that's right. I'm not, okay.
What's the total?
No, I always check.
I know. Somebody's gotta check. So the total is eighty five million, four hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars.
Okay, so we're gonna vote on all three of these because, you know, even though the amounts haven't changed, there, you know, there was.
And the four sixty, what happened with that one?
The four sixty is wrapped up in the town operating.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's another account.
Yes.
That's another account.
That's twenty two thousand six hundred and ninety four dollars.
Matt, you, Matt, you can't play poker because it's all over your face. I, no, listen, I'm going to be honest. Your opinion is different from my opinion. It doesn't mean you're right or I'm wrong or vice versa. It means that we all live in this town and we should get along. It's not a personal attack against you. It's, it's my belief versus your belief. So is that fair?
It's fair.
I never do that when you make a decision.
Okay, and that's fair, and I also think that budgets should be, reflect reality. And, you know, sometimes you can lower a budget and knowing that you're just gonna overspend it because it's, and, and I see, I see a risk there because.
No, I, I can't hear, so I'm turning that way. I'm sorry. Is that what you meant? You, what did you mean when you said, I, I didn't hear what you said. I see a, a.
Why don't we, why don't we talk offline? It's okay.
Yeah, but that's, that's not a bar with some beer. All right, I'd like to collectively, uh, get to order.
Yeah, you gotta.
Yeah, this motion. We got a couple things, okay? I'd like to make a motion to approve the town budget in the amount of thirty four thousand two hundred and forty, no, thirty four million, two hundred and forty six thousand, five hundred and eighty six dollars. Second?
Was that right, Brad?
Yes, and that's the town operating debt service, Board of Ed maintenance.
And Deline seconded it. That's the town, right?
Yeah, it's the town, it's what goes to the referendum.
Right.
I'm just telling you it includes the debt services.
Yes, very good.
I'm, I'm sorry. It's really difficult. Sorry. Brad, you just told me Board of Ed maintenance. It's four fifty.
Four sixty.
Four six.
It's account four sixty, four hundred and fifty thousand.
Four sixty, four fifty, same thing, Bob.
Okay, okay.
So that's after the reduction of twenty two thousand six ninety four. The four sixty account was four hundred and fifty thousand.
Right, right. Thank you.
All right.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
I oppose.
That's town side. Okay, the Board of Education. I make a motion to approve the Board of Education at fifty one million, one hundred and sixty four thousand, eight hundred and thirty one dollars. All in favor signify by, whoa, I'm sorry.
Who seconded it?
I didn't.
Okay, Bobby just seconded, sorry. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. Nay.
Nay. The total amount is, I'd like to make a motion to approve the total amount, the combination of those two amounts, eighty five million, four hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars. Second? I'll say. Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, that doesn't mean I don't like kids.
It does.
I mean that sincerely.
I do too. It doesn't mean that. It means, you know, we have different ways of looking at it. Eight, eighty five.
No, no, I'm sorry, I have to leave the vote.
Oh, yeah, forty three. Did you get all those? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Hello?
Motion to adjourn.
You know what, someone told me on Facebook, they said, you have to get your members of last, they're not my children.
Second.
Second.
I second.
Yeah, no, we, we're done.
We're not yet, we need to vote.
Yes, we must.
To adjourn.
No, no, one second. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, if anybody's curious, point three three mils increase, point nine eight percent.
Okay.
Point nine eight percent.
Yes, just under one percent.